All right, excellent. Welcome everyone to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting for Thursday, July 1st, 2021. The time is now 6:03 PM. Due to concerns over COVID-19 exposure, the city has implemented measures to protect our community, including the closing of council chambers and limiting public attendance to electronic means only. Members of the public may view the live meeting proceedings on Tempe Channel 11 or attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information. I should also make a quick note too to say that this is our final virtual regular council meeting and that after we return from our summer break on August 5th, we will be returning fully to the council chamber. So it's going to be very exciting and for more than a year, there have not been any meetings of the council chambers. I know as an example myself and council member Garland who were elected in mid-2020 have still not had a council meeting in the chamber. So it's going to be very exciting to go down there. We look forward to seeing all of you on August 5th when we return. Next up, we're going to do item number one here, which is a moment of silence. We'll just go ahead and take a few seconds to have a moment of silence. Thank you so much. Next up is item number two, Pledge of Allegiance. I will go ahead and start off here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next up here, we have item number three, Meeting Minutes. I'm going to be assisted tonight by Councilmember Adams. I will look to Councilmember Adams. I guess it looks like we don't have anything on 3A, but we do have some stuff for 3B.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I motion that we accept all the boards and commission committee meeting minutes.
Great, I've got a motion by Councilmember Adams to move for items 3B, 1 through 4. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Garland. All right, I'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey? Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? Councilmember Arredondo Savage? Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That item passes four to zero with Councilmember Cubey, Vice Mayor Keating, and Councilmember Arredondo Savage absent. Next up, we have item number four, Reports and Announcements. I have one, just to remind people that the City of Tempe Judicial Advisory Board reappointments and appointments are actually on the agenda on item 5A1. And so please feel free to take a look at those when you have an opportunity. Next up, we have our item 4B, which is our City Managers Reports and Announcements. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. A bit of news to share with you and the public today. Received word, good news, bad news situation. The good news is that one of our outstanding city employees is going to be receiving a promotion. The bad news is unfortunately, it's with Maricopa County. I wanted to wish Alex Smith, who's worked for the City of Tempe for the last 16 years, all the best in his new position with the county. I know he's going to do great there. We're going to certainly miss him. I've had the privilege of working with a lot of very talented individuals and intelligent individuals, but none more so than Alex. He's been a true asset and has represented the city well in many matters involving real estate, development, development agreements, things like that, and has always had the best interest of the City of Tempe at heart. And I wish him nothing but great success, continued success in his new position. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Also would like to extend my congratulations to Alex as well. I've known Alex for a number of years, just not just during my term as mayor, but obviously during my two terms as a member of the city council. And Alex is just absolutely exceptional when it comes to the numbers, the specifics, when it comes to these economic development deals. He just does an incredible job and I'm always frankly floored at the amount of information he has in his head and how quickly he's able to process all of that information and give it right back to us. So Alex, it's been a pleasure working with you, my friend. I really appreciate you and we just really, we're going to miss you, but we know this is a great opportunity for you to continue to do other things and do even bigger and better things. So quite honestly, congratulations on the opportunity, but you are surely going to be missed at the City of Tempe. But congratulations and we look forward to keeping in touch with you. Right. Next up here, item number five here is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk. Councilmembers may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. The public may also submit written comments via the City of Tempe Speaker Comment Card System at www tempe.gov/clerk. The consent agenda tonight is miscellaneous items 5A1 through 5A4, awards of bids and contracts, 5B1 through 5B7, and resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C4. Any agenda item marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item and can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. I'll first look to the council. Council, are there any items that you'd like to remove from the consent agenda for All right, hearing none, do I have a motion from council to approve the consent agenda? I'm going to say moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Garland. I'm going to go ahead and call for a roll call vote here. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey? Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? Councilmember Arredondo Savage? Councilmember Adams?
Aye, Mayor.
And I vote aye as well. The consent agenda passes seven to zero. All right, let's go to the next thing here. All right, next up here, we have the non-consent agenda. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Why my screen flashed a little bit there? Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard, but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Councilmembers who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter and the city clerk will provide the council members with a disclosure form at this time. First up here is miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. The first item under the section is 6A1, is to approve the utilization of a one-year Penal County Cooperative Contract with Southwest Slurry Seal for pavement preservation and maintenance work on city streets and parking lots. Council, any comments or discussion on item 6A1?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Adams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Navarro. I will take a roll call vote here. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey? Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? Councilmember Arredondo Savage? Councilmember Adams?
Aye, Mayor.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6A1 passes four to zero with Councilmember Cubey, Vice Mayor Keating, and Councilmember Arredondo Savage absent. The next item under this section is 6A2, which is to award a construction contract to Nesbit Contracting Company Incorporated for the pavement preservation fiscal year 2022 Group One project for South 52nd Street from West Broadway Road to West 1st Street, the industrial area bound by South Priest Drive, West Broadway Road, Union Pacific Railroad, and West Southern Avenue, South River Parkway from East Elliott Road to East Warner Road, and East Warner Road from South Rural Road to South Price Road. Council, any comments or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Adams. I will take a roll call vote here. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey? Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? Councilmember Arredondo Savage? Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6A2 passes four to zero with Councilmember Cubey, Vice Mayor Keating, and Councilmember Arredondo Savage absent. The last item under the section is 6A3, which is to approve one-year contract renewals with All City Towing, Apache Sands Service Center Incorporated, and Professional Towing and Recovery LLC for vehicle towing services utilized by the police and municipal utilities departments. Council, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing, okay, moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Adams. I will call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro? Councilmember Cubey? Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? Councilmember Arredondo Savage? Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6A3 passes four to zero with Councilmember Cubey, Vice Mayor Keating, and Councilmember Arredondo Savage absent. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no vote will be taken. The second hearing and vote for these items is scheduled for August 5th, 2021. First up, we have item 6B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing abandonment of a public utility easement lying west of Farmer Avenue and located in the northeast quarter of Section 21 Township 1, North Range 4 East, Hila and Salt River Base, and Meridian, Maricopa County, Arizona. Were there any comments received from the public regarding this item?
Nothing for this item, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay. Given that this is a discussion, once again, this is only the first read on this item, so no vote's going to be taken this evening. The second and final public hearing on this item will be scheduled for August 5th, 2021. All right, the next item under the section is 6B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a sanitary sewer easement located in a planned area development at the northwest corner of East Apache Boulevard and South Terrace Road. Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public regarding this item? Or were there any requests from the public wishing to address the city council on this item?
No submissions for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none. Just want to reiterate, the second and final public hearing of this item is scheduled for August 5th, 2021. The next item under the section is 6B3, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing abandonment of a public utility easement lying north of Gilbert Drive and located in the southwest quarter of Section 11 Township 1, North Range 4 East, Hila and Salt River Base, and Meridian, Maricopa County, Arizona. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public regarding this item? Or were there any requests from the public wishing to address the city council?
Nothing for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion on item 6B3? All right, hearing none. Once again, the second and final public hearing on this item will take place on August 5th, 2021. The next item under the section is 6B4, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing abandonment of a roadway public utility and traffic control easement lying on the southwest corner of the intersection of Curry Road and Miller Road and located in the southwest quarter of Section 11 Township 1, North Range 4 East, Hila and Salt River Base, and Meridian, Maricopa County, Arizona. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public regarding this item? Or if there are any requests from the public wishing to address the city council on this item?
Nothing received for this item, Mayor.
Sounds good. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none. Just want to reiterate that the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for August 5th, 2021. Oops, sorry. I hit the camera by accident. Next item under the section is 6B5, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the acquisition or approving the acquisition by the city and subsequent conveyance of certain improved property at the addresses of 2164 East Apache Boulevard, 2158 East Apache Boulevard, and 2174 East Apache Boulevard, collectively known as the Properties, to the Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing Incorporated, a nonprofit corporation otherwise known as the affiliate, for use as residential rental properties and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement to acquire and convey the properties, covenants, deeds, and other related documents necessary to effect such acquisition, conveyance, and related transactions. Is staff available to make a statement on this?
Good evening, Mayor. So Levon Lamy, City of Tempe Housing Manager. Staff is available to answer any questions anyone may have on this item. However, this acquisition would preserve the current 46 units all in with those three properties as affordable housing with a longer-term redevelopment plan, which would put approximately 150 units of permanently affordable rental housing on that site, furthering the hometown for all initiative into perpetuity. And that is all for this particular, unless there are questions.
No real questions, Levon, except for the fact of just telling you once again that this is amazing work. You know, you and Naomi and your team are just doing such an incredible job when it comes to the furtherance of more affordable housing in this community. And I'm just so excited that with Hometown For All only being on the books for six months, we've seen huge strides when it comes to affordable housing, just building on the incredible work that you were already doing in this area. So I just wanted to say thank you and frankly, just continue to keep up the great work. You know, I know not just the council, but I know the entire community is so excited about what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public regarding this item? Or any requests from the public wishing to address the city council on this item?
No public input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
Mayor, this is Vice Mayor Keating. Just want to let you know that I'm on the meeting.
Excellent, welcome Vice Mayor, appreciate it. All right, hearing no comments or discussion, just want to reiterate that the second and final public hearing of this item is scheduled for August 5th, 2021. The next item under the section is 6B6, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the acquisition or approving, I keep saying that, approving the acquisition by the city of certain improved property at the address of 2101 East Apache Boulevard for use as short-term transitional housing and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement to acquire. Would staff like to make a statement on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Levon Lamy, City of Tempe Housing Manager. Again, with this property at 2101, this would be the preservation and ultimate redevelopment for additional affordable housing. The property itself would immediately be, or for the short term, be used as temporary transitional housing with a longer-term redevelopment of up to approximately 50 units on a multifamily redevelopment for permanent affordable housing on that site. And if anyone has any questions, staff's available.
Great, thank you. Council, any comments or questions for Levon? All right, seeing none. Once again, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for August 5th, 2021. The last item under the section is 6B7, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a planned area development overlay and a development plan review for one existing office building, two new three-story office buildings, and two parking structures for Carvana located at 1275 West Rio Salado Parkway. The applicant is Butler Design Group. Would the applicant like to make a statement on this item?
Please, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Wendy Riddell, please, go ahead.
Wonderful, and I think Greg is going to be kind enough to pull up a presentation for me. Wendy Riddell with the law firm Barry Riddell, 6750 East Camelback. My pleasure to be here virtually. I look forward very much to being back in person with you in August. On behalf of Verdi Investments and their corporate headquarters for Carvana. Next slide, if you would. So as I'm sure most of this council knows, Carvana is a locally owned headquartered here in Tempe. They are a nationally renowned company publicly traded with a market cap of $50 billion, industry in car sales, and they want to keep and have their corporate headquarters here in Tempe. So the site we're discussing today is at the southeast corner of Priest Drive, Rio Salado. It is approximately 15 acres. Putting it here in context, as I know the council is very, very familiar, it's immediately south of the priest yard. It's a site frankly that I think has deserved some development, somewhat of a gateway for Tempe and has sat vacant for far too long. I think this will be a great complement to everything that's occurring at the IDEA campus as well, not to mention the priest yard and what it holds. So we are requesting here today a planned area development overlay modifying the industrial district PAD development standards to accommodate an office development and a major development plan review design approval for the office. Next. Everything we are proposing today is consistent with the general plan as well as with the character area plan here. All of the elements you're going to see, it's a well amenitized site, lots of shade, lots of landscaping, lots of pedestrian connections that fit very well within the character area here. So our proposal again, Carvana Headquarters, two new Class A office buildings, not to mention incorporating the existing office building on site, for a total of approximately 300,000 square feet. There'll be two new parking structures. Those will include charging stations. There's centralized amenity space. We are not, just to be clear, proposing any vehicle storage, retail sales, and there's no call center. This is really their C-suite employees that will be housed here. So here you can see the layout as we sort of plug it into the site, the two three-story office buildings. You can see the existing office building. Ultimately, the placement of the garages. I should mention, there's actually going to be 10 charging stations per garage. You see that lovely central amenity space. We're thrilled to be incorporating public art here and you can see those pedestrian connections throughout this corporate campus. One of the other things that we're accomplishing through this project is we're actually moving the access point from 1st Street, moving it to the east to allow there to be a signalized intersection and safer turning movements. We're doing that obviously with the cooperation here at Tempe. And I think not only does it create a much more cohesive campus for Carvana, I think it helps create greater opportunity for the priest yard immediately to the north. So as I mentioned, this is an extremely well amenitized corporate campus. They've got a life-size chessboard, basketball court, pickleball court, landscape and hardscape treatments, public art. It is a very active, open corporate campus. Then to give you an idea of what it looks like when you're standing at the corner of Priest Drive, sort of that gateway view of the southeast corner, this gives you a good idea of the type of structure that we're proposing. Here again, you see this internal view from this lovely amenitized courtyard. You see the glass, you see the concrete. It was very well received, the design of the structure at DRC. And then you can also see that this was a constrained site that ultimately dictated the placement of the garages. You can see a great deal of effort was put into how those garages are ultimately screened. These kind of metal fins that come off of the garage as you drive down the road, they give this great sense of movement throughout. And then of course, they provide also some unique landscaping opportunities. And then this is the garage screening that you see from Rio Salado. Again, you get to see those fins that stick out and you see the landscaping providing that little sense of movement. Just a few other small facts. Carvana itself as a company provides incentives for employees who use share the ride. It's a ride matching system for commuters, something I know Tempe takes very seriously and something that Carvana takes seriously as well. And then we did have a virtual neighborhood meeting. We actually only had one resident attend. He was an HOA president for the area and he expressed support for the case. We were lucky as well at DRC, they recommended approval by six to one. We also at that meeting had a neighbor who attended to support or filed a card to support unsolicited. Frankly, we're not aware of any opposition to the case at all. Everyone who has had a chance to learn about has been tremendously supportive. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you have and I very much look forward to seeing you all in person in August.
Great, thank you so much Wendy for the presentation, really appreciate it. Any members of council, any comments or questions for Ms. Riddell?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Adams, please.
Yes, it looks like a beautiful project to me. I'm just really, really happy that we're going to turn that corner into something that looks good. And of course, the more trees, the better for me. So just as many as we can get in there and really try to keep our shade canopy growing in, but it's really beautiful and so excited that Carvana is going to have their international quarters in Tempe, Arizona. So thanks, Ms. Riddell, for your presentation. I really appreciate it and for the information and I am comfortable moving forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Adams. Next up, let's go with Councilmember Cubey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hi Wendy. And it does look very well designed and I just, I'm going to ask what I usually ask and that is for solar installation, since it is an office building and it seems like it would be well suited to it. So I'm hoping we can have discussions since I haven't sat down and spoken with you yet about the project, but consider solar?
Councilwoman Cubey, I'd be happy to visit with you about it, yes. I don't know that we have solar planned here, but I do think we have a couple other things that we can share with you that will make you happy.
Yeah, so solar will make me happy, very happy to have a deployment there. And also, will you be working with highly skilled labor?
You know, Councilwoman Cubey, I do not know the answer to that question right now. I'm happy to take a look and answer it for you.
Sure, I'd love to get together in the next, what, five weeks until we have a second read, so I would really welcome. Thank you so much.
So thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Next up, we have Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you so much, Wendy. I like the design and I like what you are planning for that area. You know, we did the land acknowledgement resolution in October of last year. Is that right? No, February, goodness. Where'd my days go? Anyway, you know, I'd like to try to see if we can continue to make that living document in many different ways. And one of the things I was looking at is when you said shade, and I was thinking of some really awesome shade structures that the Indigenous Design Collaborative from ASU put together, their architects and designers that had a native flair and was really pretty unique. And you also had some great space out there that might be a great place to put some artwork on the ground and somewhere outside the building, but I'm just throwing that out there, but it was a nice design. So thank you so much for presenting that to us.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Excellent, thank you, Councilmember Garland. Any other council members, any comments or questions for Ms. Riddell? Okay, I don't have any more on my end either, so Ms. Riddell, thank you so much for the presentation, very much appreciate it. And just want to reiterate to everyone that the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for August 5th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, next up here are items for a second public hearing and final adoption. These items were read, introduced on June 24th, 2021, and final votes on these items will be taken tonight. Next up, item 6C1, ordinance's items for second hearing and final adoption. The first item under section 6C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from CSS and R4 to MU4 in the transportation overlay district corridor, a planned area development for a new 219-unit apartment community with five live-work units and a 590-square-foot restaurant and a development plan review for two four-story buildings on 4.51 acres from Mill House located at 2125 East Apache Boulevard. The applicant is Gabbage and Burnham PLC. Would the applicant like to make a statement? I believe that's probably Manjulavaz.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your record. My name is Manjulavaz, law firm of Gabbage and Burnham. I am just going to make, I made a fairly lengthy presentation last week and so just wanted to kind of talk a little bit about a couple of things we talked about, happy to make a further presentation, but I know Councilwoman Cubey asked about solar and I've talked to Ryan and Will. As we talked about, we have some modifications to make that I've talked to the rest of the council about color and trying to, little pops of color. We will also be incorporating solar onto our canopies, so I did want to mention that. In addition to the solar, we also have, we also have the EV charging stations, which I think we talked about. And then the last thing we talked about is Levon and I have had, we have about four residents left in the RV park from 14. I think a couple of them are leaving at the end of July, but I talked to Levon last week and then Levon and I are just texting right now. So Levon is going to help me, just the last couple of residents in the RV park, well not help me, but we're all going to work together with the owner to make sure that we take care of those residents who are in the RV park and Levon is going to have one of the navigators talk to them if they need anything. So just wanted to give you an update on that. And other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. You know, I think we did mention that the project in Mill House, we're contributing to Hometown For All, which we're happy to do so. So with that, I'm happy to answer additional questions.
Great, thank you, Ms. Vaz. I'm going to go to Councilmember Cubey.
Actually, that was leftover from the last one.
Sorry, sorry about that.
But while I'm on the, while I'm on the, the video here or whatever, the meeting. Manj, I just want to thank you so much for taking seriously the request for solar and, and for integrating solar into the project. It's really important to our city, to the next generation, to our generation, and I so appreciate that you only, you not only made the effort, but you made it happen. Thank you.
Of course, we're happy to do it.
Thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Any other council members? Actually, let me just, before I move forward with that, let me just see if there were, Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public regarding this item? Or were there any requests from the public wishing to speak to the council about this item?
No submissions for the Mill House item, Mayor.
Okay, I will go ahead and formally close the public hearing then, and I'm going to turn to Councilmember Adams for comments.
I just, I'm very excited about the incorporation of the solar on this project and I really appreciate the colors, the pops of colors too, because I thought it was a little bit, it just needs some color. So thanks for really listening to us, Ms. Vaz, and making this happen and I'm excited to see this project come to fruition. Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Adams. Any other council members, any comments or questions for Ms. Vaz? All right, hearing none. I will look to the council for a motion on item 6C1.
So move.
Motion approved. Okay, sounds like a move by Councilmember Garland and seconded by Councilmember Adams. I will call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage? Councilmember Adams? And I vote aye as well. Item 6C1 passes six to zero with Councilmember Arredondo Savage absent. The last item under the section is 6C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from PCC1 to R4 at a planned area development overlay to establish development standards, a public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing a general plan projected land use map amendment from commercial to residential, and a general plan projected density map amendment from medium density, which is up to 15 dwelling units per acre, to medium to high density, which is up to 25 dwelling units per acre, and to approve a development plan review for a new one-to-four-story multifamily development containing 200 dwelling units for Price and Baseline Roads located at 2160 East Baseline Road. The applicant is Gabbage and Burnham PLC, and I believe once again, that's going to be Ms. Manjulavaz.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of, members of the council, again, for your record, Manjulavaz, law firm of Gabbage and Burnham, 40 North Central. If you, Greg, can I share my presentation? With a little share button? Okay.
Hold on a second, Ms. Vaz, I'm having a little technical difficulty with the presentation.
Oh yeah, no worries.
We'll get that up and running for you.
Okay, either my, either the one you have or I can do mine, whatever's easier.
I think, I think Greg Wolf may have the presentation.
We do, and Manjula, just so you know, we're having some technical difficulties on the hosting end, we're not able to.
Oh yeah, oh yeah. No presenter. Okay, no problem.
Yeah, let's give this a, give this a few seconds here and see if we can. There we go.
There we go, okay. So just briefly, the, oops, okay, anyway, so I'm here today on behalf of Trammell Crowe Residential and I, I've given a fairly lengthy presentation before. I wanted to go through a couple of things that certainly I think I've heard from our last presentation, talking to some of the neighbors and then talking to some of the members of the council, that here's the pictures, okay, hold on, Greg. Okay, so here's the site. Next slide, there we go. Here's the site, I think we all know, the 101 and baseline. And next slide, please Greg, and I think that will maybe help us. So as, as Rose Brad, we are doing a general plan amendment and just to change the projected density from medium density to medium-high, which I think is probably just a medium-high density up to 25 dwellings per acre. And as we talked about, that's similar to kind of what you see along baseline at the Harper and San Marquis and that kind of similar type of high density in terms of density, but not the high density you may see, you know, either on Broadway and north kind of in what you might imagine. And then again, a zoning map amendment to change from PCC1, that commercial to multifamily residential, and then PAD and the DPR, next slide. Greg, please. Just to give you a little sense of the project, which I think we've all seen, I'm going to come back to these pictures in a bit, but we can just talk about both along our western edge and the eastern edge of the project along the freeway, the Price-Frontage Road. Next slide. The site itself, and I want to talk a little bit about this, the site itself is, as the mayor kind of mentioned in the introduction, is one to four stories. We have 200 apartment units, 10 studios, 91 bedrooms, 86 two-bedrooms, 14 three-bedrooms, which is approximately 314 bedrooms, which I'm talking about. I know that we've, I've heard, and so let me talk a little bit of the DRC, that we've had some people who are concerned among the community that we don't have enough parking. We have 13, 314 bedrooms and we have 362 vehicle parking spaces and that includes 40 guest spaces and 200 covered spaces. But that breakdown is approximately, we have 322 parking spaces for the 314 bedrooms. And this is not just a typical kind of multifamily development that you may see down, you know, kind of what you would see in central Tempe and south Tempe where you, we would not expect to have a car for each bedroom. People have two bedrooms, may have two people or maybe one person who has a guest bedroom. You know, maybe they're divorced or whatever and they have a room for their children. So we think that we have more than enough parking for our residents, but certainly we have added some to kind of make sure that the community feel comfortable. And in addition to those spaces, we've also have 40 guest spaces, which meets the code and we think is more than adequate for kind of any guests that are there. The other thing I wanted to mention is this has 32% landscape area. We have 30, which I'll show in a second, which is more than, you know, what is allowed current, was acquired currently under PCC1 and the lot coverage is 27%, which is certainly less than kind of PCC1. If it was an office building or some retail, could do something up to 50% coverage. So just to talk a little bit about the changes that we've made since the DRC to try to answer some of the parking issue concerns that we may have heard from some of the community. Next slide, Greg. And again, just to kind of go through what I, what I had mentioned, again, 362 spaces, the 40 vehicle spaces, so a little over one space per bedroom and that works out to 1.6 spaces per unit, guest parking ratio and certainly the bike parking. Next slide, Greg. And one of the things I want to talk a little bit about that we've talked a lot about is kind of the median, and this is a condition that came out of the DRC. The first part is addressing the parking space deficit that we've already worked through and addressed in the site plan. The second sentence is about working with the transportation division to address the community concerns that related to the design of the median in baseline road. And so the median that we're presenting and that we have presented, we're working with ADOT and I think we are working on, if you can go next slide, Greg. This third, what we, what I call the third alternative. So it's a median that allows an access into baseline and you go, as you're heading west, there's a direct access into baseline. The median currently is extended past Bala so that I think initially we heard that we didn't want to have a lot of traffic on Bala. It doesn't prevent access on Bala. You could go through this median, make the left and go on Bala, but this is kind of a working median, again, not approved. I talked to Kathy Hollow and she can certainly address this, but, and I'm going to show you the second alternative that we think we can work, we've talked, we're working with ADOT, Kathy and I think we can all work together to, as we understand, I know there's been some concerns about blocking off Bala. So next slide, Greg. And one more slide. This is the current kind of revised median that I think may work well for everybody and, you know, talking to Kathy today and I've talked to Chuck Ryder, our traffic engineer. This is a median site that allows the protected left for those people who are coming from the west going east to go north into our site. There's not, we don't anticipate there'll be a lot of people in this area, so you have traffic going north into, if you want to go directly into the development. Again, this is a gated development, so it's not a free flow in and out. However, this median configuration has a little bulb out to kind of help with any stacking. We don't think, you know, given the amount of traffic that you'll see on baseline for people, this is not a restaurant, it's not an office building, you don't have, everybody needs to rush in at one time. So we think this allows for three-car stacking, but it also allows opening at Bala. And this is what we are talking to ADOT about right now, which is alternative 3A, which I think accomplishes a lot of what I've heard from the feedback that I've heard from the community, that access to and from Bala and the current access going in and out, making a left is preserved, but it also allows, continues to have access along baseline going north for our development and kind of, and also tries to make sure that there are no residents, well not no, but we try to keep all of residents from our development off Bala and have the primary access in our site from baseline and then on along Priest. Next slide. And the other thing I wanted to, you know, in talking, this is the corner of Price and Baseline and while it doesn't look exactly like the corner of Price and Baseline, we understand that the traffic light is missing. There's actually a little, as, as you saw at your last presentation, there is a City of Tempe sign kind of where those people are, that has the Welcome to Tempe and the Sister City people on it. We've talked to Councilman Navarro a little bit about trying to put an art piece here and while it won't be right at the corner because there's site triangle issues, but we think kind of where those people are, there's a good opportunity to do a nice kind of big, a good art piece that whether, you know, we can incorporate with Sister Cities and try to do a cool Sister City sign art piece, or we have a nice art piece that brings some entrance and some visibility into that corner and kind of makes a statement as you come, you're heading west from Mesa to try to kind of show that Tempe is, you know, cool and we have some nice entrance and certainly we believe there'll be a lot of landscaping that will really make that corner pop. Next slide. And then just a couple of things I want to mention, I'm not going to, we talked a little bit about, but this is to give you a little sense of the site plan, just to again, talk through it. We've tried to do versus what you see a little bit on baseline and some other places. And I think we kind of started with having all the buildings being three-story when we started, you know, a year, year and a half, about, it's almost two years ago now. And in talking with some of the community and talking with the city, we thought that this present, this kind of configuration where you put the two stories on the west adjacent to kind of the one and two-story Continental Villas, so that the heights along the west are similar to what you have along Continental Villas. You have a three-story building to the north, but kind of a lower three-story, which I'll talk about. And this corner, the furthest, northest point of the three-story does not have windows looking north. Their windows look east at the freeway and then put some height along the freeway here, the four-story, and then again prevents, makes a barrier for sound and tries to make kind of a nice edge along the freeway, but also has a lot of open space, a lot of vegetation, kind of free-flowing kind of site plan. And then we've had, if you can see, private yards along both the Bala side and some of the side along Price, which would make it a very, it's a very inviting, more home ownership kind of look that we think will appeal to a lot of people. And the people that we're talking about appealing to are, as you and I, and all we all know, and I live here also, is you have a lot of jobs coming to Tempe and you have people who are going north and south on the 101. And whether that, you know, going down to Discovery or going north to Smith Innovation District or further north, whether it's Scottsdale or Chandler, you have people who are driving through Tempe to get to jobs but don't have as many opportunities to live in Tempe and that's certainly true as you go further south. So this is a good location adjacent to a freeway, adjacent to Arturials, that would appeal to professionals. A lot of the new residents who are coming into the city and we think this will be a great location for, you know, someone, we try to give them a lot of amenities who want to become part of our community. Next slide. And then get just briefly what I was talking about, I won't belabor my whole conversation. I know some of you have some questions, but I did want to mention this again. So the building heights here on the two-story, the top of the building is 20 feet, the parapet being 28 feet. And that is, the top of the building is 20 feet and then the windows are lower and you, the underlying, the height, maximum height is 35 feet. So that building is lower than what it could be potentially, and certainly the three-story building, the top of that building plate is 31 feet, which is both lower than, just as a perspective, lower than what PCC1, an office building or another retail building could be. And the buildings, the Harper and San Miguel or San Marquis, sorry, that is next to the Lowe's, those are three-story apartment buildings that we all see all the time, but those heights are taller than these heights. So just to give you a little sense of kind of the height, they're a little shorter, these buildings are a little shorter than those. And then the top, the four-story is a little taller. Next slide. And then these are just surrenderings of the site, which I think we've all seen. So next slide, Greg. So with that, I'm happy to kind of talk a little bit about this. We've talked a little bit about, you know, kind of putting, I think these trees, well this is the west side and this is the two-story, just to give you a sense, and then having some trees that would help maybe shade this a little bit. But I just want to mention a couple other things since we talked about it and I mentioned to Councilwoman Cubey, that we have talked about and we will be able to, we're going to add solar to this project also on the carports as we discussed. And I think the other thing we talked about is we've added, actually, we do have charging stations, we'll be adding a couple more charging stations here. And I mean, these, and this project also will be contributing to Hometown For All. So with that, I can talk more about it, but I know we probably have some questions, so I thought I maybe would stop right here and answer some questions.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Vaz, really appreciate it. Before we go to council comments, I want to turn to the public hearing here. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests from the public wishing to address the council on this item?
Mayor, I have some comment cards to be read into the record, but first, I had a special request from Candace Toller to speak to council. However, she has now asked that Mr. Tom Hoover speak instead. Additionally, she wanted it noted for the record, she's requesting that a final decision be delayed until the August 5th regular council meeting. And as Mr. Hoover is being moved forward to address council, I wanted to note that while the council rules of procedure indicate that a public speaker, that public speaker visual aids are not allowable. that public speaker visual aids are not allowable, the mayor, as our parliamentarian, has given special dispensation for staff to provide the petition submitted earlier by Ms. Toller via the WebEx screen for viewing. To protect the privacy of residential addresses for those who signed the petition, the addresses have been obscured. Additionally, the petition was available in the agenda packet. And once Mr. Hoover has spoken, I'll have additional comment cards to read into the record. Mr. Hoover, welcome, and the microphone is yours for the next three minutes.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, sir, we can.
Oh, well, thank you for having me on. Thanks for the time. I live in Continental Villas 3, and I've been working with Candace, who is very passionate about this project and its impact on our community. And soon as we learned about, on the memo of May 7th from the attorney, about the median, our concern was really about the traffic and the access and egress into Bala. And we understood that this was approved, this version that you've got right here in front of you, has been approved by ADOT. And I think, and we think, that the project shouldn't go through, shouldn't be approved until ADOT and the city engineers come up with a final agreement as to how the traffic's going to be impacted by the median. And so that's one of our main points. And our other point was just that, that the, in my, the impact of that community on our community, and the number, the traffic in our area, the access to our alleyways, our alleys aren't designed for lateral transportation, I think, or, and I also think that the traffic along Price, along Price is being underrepresented, I think is a very dangerous thoroughfare. The last time I checked, the City of Tempe traffic count, that was for two years ago, was 12,000 cars a day, with 40% of the traffic in the morning and 60% of the traffic in the evening. My next-door neighbor got team-boned coming out, came out, coming out of our alleyway. So it's a very, the egress into that complex is very dangerous, and I think it's going to back up traffic along Price Road. I, this is, and I don't have any other comments. I think that our community, one of, the other thing was that we went out and got the signatures during a pandemic, and got over 350 signatures. And we feel that those voices need to be heard. And that's why we made a request that the, the names of the people be shown in the records. These are voices of people in our community that are important to all of us, and we should be listened to. We don't have any kind of select presentation. We rely upon the city council to hear our voices, and I hope that you hear our voices. So that ends my talk. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hoover, really appreciate it. Madam Clerk, I believe you have a few cards?
Yes, I do, Mayor. First card comes from Elizabeth Grosh, representing Cole Park neighborhood, resident of Tempe. Elizabeth writes, number one, postpone the Tempe City Council final decision from July 1st to August 5th regarding the Price and Baseline four-story apartment complex. Number two, requesting an independent and unbiased traffic study be performed post-pandemic to address the impact of 370-plus additional automobiles using the 101 loop, volume at Southern and Price, and Baseline and Price, I-60 volume on southbound McClintock Drive, southbound Price Road, and Collector Street, such as Fremont Road, River Drive, and Country Club Way. The traffic study, which was completed in 2020 during the pandemic, reveals that some streets were not adequately analyzed for accommodating additional residential traffic. During the late afternoon rush hour, traffic piles up at Price and Southern, and McClintock Road is congested. What remedy is available to have an independent and unbiased traffic study performed post-pandemically to address the impact of increased residential traffic volume on McClintock, as well as on neighborhood streets such as Fremont? Will you please postpone the council's final decision on rezoning the Price and Baseline project until August 5th, 2021? Next card comes from Chris Higgins, representing himself, resident of Tempe. Chris writes, I have lived on the South River Drive in the Cole Park neighborhood since 1982. My wife and I are opposed to the proposed apartment complex at Price and Baseline, which is one block away from our home, primarily due to increased traffic volumes we anticipate occurring on the neighborhood streets, particularly the through streets such as Fremont, Country Club, and River Drive. We also believe that the project entrance exit on Baseline Road and the possible access restriction at Bala Drive will cause unsafe vehicular and pedestrian conditions, along with significant traffic congestion at an already very busy intersection. We are also concerned with how the addition of the large number of residents at the project will affect the quality and ambience of our close-knit neighborhood. Next card comes from Shelley Tunis, also resident of Tempe. Shelley writes, I am a homeowner whose property is directly affected by this proposed development. I have previously submitted emails to the city council members and mayor about my concerns relating to public health and safety options involving the intersection at Bala Drive and Baseline Road, plus the reduced number of parking spaces for this proposed development. I do not understand why the Tempe code requires a specific number of parking spaces for this development, yet the proposal allows for a reduction of spaces. Is there a solid foundation for the code? If yes, the code requirements must be applied. There are many unresolved issues involving this proposed development that will have a detrimental effect on the adjacent neighborhood. The city council should not approve this proposed development until all the issues are satisfactorily resolved. Next card comes from Patrick McNamara, resident of Tempe. And Patrick writes, as a Tempe resident, I would like to put my full support behind approving this zoning request. The site selected by the developer is perfectly suited to higher-density, multifamily development, clearly is unwounded by retailers, and due to its adjacency to the 101 and with Baseline frontage, I could think of no better use for the site. Tempe is at a crossroads. Young people who live in Tempe while attending ASU would like to stay after graduation, but there are not enough available units for those that would like to stay, but not necessarily live in the downtown area. Those new residents are potential long-term residents and even possible owners if we can find a place for them in the early days of their careers. Lastly, I have a long-interpreted concerns over traffic and parking as veiled fears of perceived lower-class neighbors, fear of the other, that will impact property values, which is in no way supported by facts. Last card comes from Fitz Madrid, resident of Tempe. And Fitz writes, I am supportive of the redevelopment and the building of apartment homes. The redevelopment of Lake Country Village Shopping Center has shown how smart development is good for everyone. Before the new build, that whole block was a dead and empty mall, and now it's homes and great businesses. The property currently at the northeast corner of Price and Baseline is a shabby, dead mall that is a beacon for our neighborhood's increasingly aggressive population of transients. It is the most, it is mostly empty retail space, provides nothing but blight, and many of its current businesses cater to the unhoused population. It's time to bring affordable housing and growth to that corner. I've owned a home in the area for over 10 years, and look forward to sharing my neighborhood with new neighbors and bidding a dead mall farewell. And Mayor, that closes the public input for this public hearing.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Next up, I'm going to go to council to see if there are any comments or discussions for Ms. Vaz, or for staff, I guess, either one. Counsel. Councilmember Cubby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I comment, I wanted to ask Manjula Vaz, what would happen if there was a continuance till August? And when is the expected response from ADOT about the, about keeping access to Bala open and not blocking, blocking Bala for the residents?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Cubby, I mean, we, you know, we have spent a lot of time kind of working through these issues. I don't, you know, we, we would prefer not to have a continuance till August. I mean, I don't know that a lot will get resolved by August. I mean, with the way ADOT works and the way the conditional works is, the conditions allows us the time to move forward with project and start the site planning and the groundwork and trying to, because I, I understand that the residents' traffic issues, and I think we kind of, as we've been trying to work through for the last year, you know, in terms of kind of the traffic along Price, right now, there are kind of four entrances on Price. And we think that kind of decreasing those number of entrances, one on Baseline and one on Price, will certainly help some of the traffic, and maybe more people will slow down some of the traffic. You know, that's, in terms of that. But in terms of kind of ADOT, as I was talking to Kathy today, we hope that we'll have an answer here in the next kind of couple of months. I mean, you know, you and I both know how some government agencies work. We do think we have some good options. I think that it'll take some work with you, you know, from the city council, and maybe Kathy to certainly help us get ADOT to answer. But I think there's an answer, and the answer doesn't matter to, to ADOT. You know, there's, the ADOT helped us because they heard the community. And I think the ADOT will help us now when they see kind of the community and the support from the council. And so, you know, a continuance, you know, continuance hurts. And as you know, you know, certainly delay costs more money in terms of time. And we're trying to, as we try to build units and encourage more people here, that just, that's a hard thing for us to do. So there's not an answer on like exactly when ADOT is going to answer, but, you know, I'm hopeful that we'll know sometime by the fall. I mean, we feel really, Kathy and I, I mean, I'm going to speak for her, but she seemed like we could work out a solution, and I feel like we can work out a solution. Our traffic engineer feels like we can work out a solution.
And hey, Manjula, it's Carl.
Go ahead and call, introduce yourself.
Sure, it's Carl Hershey with Trammell Crowe Residential, the developer. I think it's important to note, at this point too, that they are going to let us, ADOT and the city is going to let us kind of proceed with our drawings and whatnot on the deal, while they mull over these two options. So I think that kind of negates any need for continuing the discussion, because they're going to consider these options along the way. So it's not like one thing precedes the next. We can, we can run simultaneous paths with these options for the Baseline entrance and the deal, the drawings for the, for the development. So I think it's important to note that, don't you think, Manjula?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much, Manjula. Thank you, Carl. Any other council members have any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, can I, after you visit all the council members, because I just wanted to comment as well?
Actually, if you want to comment right now, Councilmember Cubby, go ahead.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. So there's been a conversation, lots of council community emails and about this multifamily project. And there's been a lot of legitimate concerns, mostly focused on, on traffic and possible congestion. And, you know, you have to look at that list of petition signers and think that's quite an impressive feat, especially during COVID times. And I really appreciate all the, the input we've been getting from, from our residents. It's a little frustrating, because there's been a lot of changes and negotiations along, along the way. Maybe many of the neighbors who signed that petition aren't necessarily aware of them. So I want to just talk to some of those issues, because, you know, at first read, when I first started hearing about this, you know, the complaints, I was a little bit alarmed at what the possible traffic impacts would be. But the reality is, and this is a hard reality, but the project is only before us as a council because of the proposed zoning change. And because of that, you know, we had a lot of dialogue, but number of us, number of the neighbors, number of the council members were really painfully aware that, of what could be built in this space without ever coming to council. So if this project weren't approved tonight, I imagine that the, with our opportunity gone, that an office building that's taller, that takes up twice as much of the lot, that's more intrusive, that has glass all around, that has views of people's homes, and, and yards, and has limited landscaping, that's what could be built. And that would be built by right. We would not be able to stop it. It wouldn't even come before us. So then I heard that, I just got this feeling in my stomach, like, there's, there's no way that we could stop this. And we also know from traffic engineering, the best practices, that office buildings and multi-use, and office buildings and commercial, they actually bring in more traffic, they bring in more traffic to neighborhoods and to the city, not less. I mean, it makes logical sense, right? If you're, if you live in an apartment, you might come and go once, twice a day, but it's business, you're having continual flow in traffic into that business and into that mall. So, you know, most of the residents that did reach out to us did focus their concerns on traffic, and thereby their neighborhoods. And I know, Mr. Mayor, you, you yourself visited the site, and many council members visited the site and met with neighbors. And it seemed that, and I am, you know, I do want to hold our, our feet to the fire, because it does seem like the neighbors greatly prefer the Alternative 3, 3A, that gives access to and from Bala preserved. I know it was confusing, because at first, some of the neighbors wanted access. They wanted the entryway to be on Bala, some didn't. There was a lot of like back and forth. But, you know, now that we've arrived at our, it's decision day, right? And not everybody got everything they wanted, but I think the neighbors and the land use attorney involved, Manjula, the developer, the council city staff, like, we really did join in a collaborative discussion. And there were a lot of twists and turns, and it was, you know, frustrating, because of COVID, we couldn't necessarily meet in person all the time. We did, Mr. Mayor, you did host one in-person meeting with a couple of neighborhood representatives that I thought was really key to kind of resolving some of the issues. So, you know, I do think we have a better product as a result. And so, you know, despite all these COVID limitations in our city and with engagement, we did have a community conversation. So there's, there's less height because of this conversation, there's less height. There's no windows on the side closest to the neighborhood. There's going to be more trees, there's going to be landscaping along the east side of Bala, I believe, because it's kind of a little bit like a, a desert scape now, I mean, completely barren. And there was interest in applying for a Marion Quarter funding at some point. But so I know the neighborhood has been really concerned about the barrenness of that site. Let's see. So, you know, again, I think there's been, there's a thoughtful approach to dealing with traffic. I'm really concerned, I want that to find, to make sure we have a strong commitment to push for access to Bala and that the median not block Bala. And it's also important to note that the address is going to be on Baseline. And a resident reached out to me and said, why was that important? You mentioned that, you know, last week. Well, it's important, because, Mr. Mayor, you alerted this to us. You put Siamese Cat Restaurant into Google Maps when you were going to visit the site. And as I, I believe the directions took you from North Tempe down McClintock and to the proposed area via Fremont. And I know there are a lot of residents off Fremont that are concerned about that. So if you have a baseline address, from my understanding, is that you're much more likely, and it's not that it always sends you that way, but in high traffic it might. But if you have a baseline address, it's going to send you down McClintock, east on Baseline, or, you know, south on Price and into the development via Price. So, you know, this is perfect. I don't know if perfect ever, it's ever going to be perfect for everyone, but I do know that it's much better than the project, when the project began and was first described to us. And I give a lot of credit to Manjula, and I give a lot of credit to the residents, especially Candace Toller from Continental Villas, and Liz Roche from Cole Park, came forward, they held our feet to the fire. And I want to thank, you know, thank the applicant, and I want to thank the residents for being part of this collaborative process. But I just want to summarize to say, I hope we, can we put somewhere in the approval tonight? I think there is something like this, that, that we really want to see a neighborhood, you know, approval of the traffic, of the traffic resolution that it not hold, that it not, sorry, impinge on Bala, and that the median not go to the, to the west of Bala and keep Bala open. So I wanted to ask, you know, Mr. Mayor and the council members, if we agreed with that direction. As it seems, it appears that the neighbors do really want to have access on Bala and not have it closed off by that meeting. Because if you look at it, one of the alternatives, a lot of U-turns are involved. And I don't think you, a lot of U-turns going west or going east is really, really safe, or, you know, the preferable, the preferable alternative. So I'm hoping that we can really have a strong commitment tonight that we will not impinge on Bala. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cubby. Before I go to the other council members, just about your suggestion, I probably need to turn back to Ms. Vaz and just sort of get her take on that, and just, you know, see if we can kind of, you know, if there's some meeting of the minds on that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think in talking to Kathy and stuff, I think it is, you know, if we could just get some sort of commitment, I mean, I can't promise ADOT, and, but I think some sort of, I agree with Councilwoman. I mean, I can't promise ADOT, but I think some sort of, I agree with Councilwoman QB, you know, some sort of comment from the council that they would prefer the, you know, prefer 3A. Because I think, we all think that ADOT wants to help work with the city of Tempe. So, you know, something in this, you know, approval or condition that says, we, we as a council support what I have written as alternative 3A that does not block Bala, similar to what Councilwoman QB said, I think is very helpful and will help us as, as we talk to ADOT and then I work with Kathy and Kathy talks to ADOT and we can work it out.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vaz, appreciate that. Next up, I'm going to go to Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Manjula, for the presentation. And also, I want to thank the residents for speaking up about this area. Very passionate area, I understand that. And, you know, very proud about their neighborhoods and what go on in their neighborhoods. I totally appreciate that. This kind of reminds me of, you know, a couple of years back when we had the Lakes Shopping Center, we went through that project. And actually, you know, that turned out to be something that we can all hang our hat on. I think it's something that was a give and take. Maybe it's not the, the perfect, perfect thing that, you know, some of us wanted. But we got to a process where that really helped get to what the project is today. With that said, taking that project and frequenting it, you know, obviously with the amenities there now and with what's transpiring in that area, that was a boost of, of need for the residents. But also, I noticed traveling that area very often, since my mom lives right off of Lake Shore, the traffic has not been very noticeable in terms of the residents that are in there and, and, and the apartments over there. Now, you're talking that apartment complex and there's another apartment complex that's within that area. And they do have access points onto Lake Shore and off of Lake Shore and then also onto baseline if needed and/or rural road. But with that said, and with what I've seen over the several years, couple of years of that being, project being done and being on those roads at various times, like I said, it's not a noticeable impact that I've seen, you know, with people relatively leaving at different times. But, you know, work schedules stay consistent, you know, you might see a little increase during the rush hours, but nothing drastic. I guess I'm trying to get to a point with the project we have today is, and I know that is less units compared, obviously, to those projects. We tried to get to a resolution. So I think it's been said that you could do office buildings there as it is today and you could do another retail venue there today. And if it did have with, with the retail, something successful, you're going to increase traffic, not just on certain peak hours, but continuously. And same with an office building. And I think it's been said, Councilmember QB and has said it, and we've also gone through this with other projects, you know, in the past. With that said, you know, we're here at this project. And, you know, I think that it might not be something that all want, all residents in that area would want. I think it's a, it's a pretty decent project. You know, we always try to do some tweaks here and there. One thing that I did brought up is, and I, and I think Candace, one of the residents, brought us up as an entryway into Tempe, and I agree with her 100%. These are actually gateways within the Tempe community, something that really shows that you're coming from Mesa into Tempe and there's a true recognition with some art piece or the presentation of the project with the green and the trees and all that other stuff. And I absolutely agree, and that's something that I've always harped on when it came down to character areas from the day we tried to get characters coming in. You know, entryways into the city from various cities into the city of Tempe, we have to have a distinction that you are now in Tempe, and I think that's key. So I do want the developer to embrace that. We talked, it was said tonight about in our piece of maybe collaboration with the sister cities. And I think that'd be a good start, but I do want something that does pop. In addition to that, you know, talking to other residents, too. And there was, there was a possible need of the fencing that is there on the existing property that I believe is part of the HOA for that townhouse community. And if they choose, you know, to work with the developer on, on increasing the block size on that, that'd be great. But I, I guess I'm going to ask this to Manjula, maybe publicly and to the developer. If there's an option to work with that community to actually maybe help with your architects or agricultural architects and designing maybe some more of a lusher vegetation to, and also providing them with trees or that vegetation in the irrigation, if that could be an option to help really kind of bring that drive of Bala up to a better looking position. I think it's, you know, with the green and the growth, you know, a fence, you know, might not be the answer, but some lush green and growth, working with the vegetation, working with the soil there, working with the irrigation there, I think that might be even a better bang for the buck. And that's also, you know, in my opinion, that's also just makes the neighborhood, it brings that visibility up of the neighborhood and attractiveness of what transpires in that neighborhood up more. With, and I'll, Manjula, I'll just talk on that, I've got one more thing. Traffic, yes, that was one of my key points of entrances and exits, how that's going to affect that area. With what has been presented to us, I would agree to the third option, keeping Bala open and having that ability to go right or left on, off of Bala. I know there's an entry point on the north on Priest going in there. I try to rack my brain over this left and right on various ways of getting back and forth within the complex, going to Target, coming back. I'm coming home from work on Priest and maybe I took McClintock or came off the 101 and I'm going to turn into that. And it still makes sense to me that I would not, if I looked at that project, especially not to try to do a cut through somewhere else, because that would not make any sense to me. I would wait my turn until I got to my entrance off of Price, I'm sorry, Price, and got into the complex. I think that also would alleviate traffic as people are just knowing that they're waiting their turn to get off of Price and not going to baseline. The other thing is too, is the property itself, having units that are different caliber and size, you do also increase the potential of families potentially moving in there. Yeah, there is going to be a variety of people, there will be some college people in there, I'm sure. But there will be some people, the young professionals. You also got to understand, we have a great corridor that's happening on a 101 with the IT and the tech industry. And this gives another opportunity within Tempe and our IT portions that are going just a little bit south of that area. It's going to add value to people to have another options of, of home. And to be honest with you, it's a great location. You can get to, you know, four or five different cities with, in downtown cities with relatively ease off the lack of location. But with Intel and Chandler and everything else, you know, there is a lot of potential of you're going to attract some of those, some of that workforce within that area. So with all that said, you know, this was a process that, you know, I was racking my brain on, not just for immediately, but actually in the past, because I know this was a project that was kind of, kind of getting built up, it kind of died off during COVID with the communication, so to speak. But I know that something had to go there and what's going there right now is just not working. And then as a property owner within that area, I know that, you know, if that was my property, I would want something to happen and each of it sell out or to build something else there. You know, that's got to have potential for those property owners, too. So with that said, Manjula, I'll talk, let me, let me know about the vegetation, the wall stuff. And if you can work with the neighbors on, on providing those options and I'll stand down from there. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Navarro, if you don't mind. Yes, of course, of course, we're happy to. And I think I discussed, talked about last time, you know, I've certainly discussed it. I have not talked to the neighbors, but we can certainly talk to our landscape architect and meet with them and certainly talk through a landscape plan with them and how I think some vegetation that, that would work well in that area would work and, you know, help them with some vegetation and, you know, maybe give them a little money for some trees and make sure that that looks good. So we're happy to do that, of course.
Perfect, thank you. And one more thing, Mayor, you know, I think when it comes down to trafficking, at the end of the day, and we see this with any new project and stuff, if there's ever any issues that transpires from a project, I think that we need to, and we owe it to the people that are within that area, that we have enforcement out there and make sure that enforcement stays out for, out there for a good duration to make sure that people are doing the right things and are behaving in the right way and not utilizing or cutting through or speeding mainly, just to get from point A to point B. But I think that with not just this, but with every project that comes into, I think that we need to, as a council and as a city, we need to honor that and provide that traffic safety with our police department or whatever we need to do to help with those causes. So that's it, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Next up, Councilmember Garland.
I thank you, Mayor. You know, I echo what Councilmember QB and Councilmember Navarro have said about the background information about the thing, you know, the residency who sent cards in and spoke tonight and really appreciate that that, they take that time to do that input and call our attention to an issue that's important to them. You know, I also want to thank Candace, who invited Councilmember QB and I to visit her home weeks ago, a couple of months ago, and walked around the area with us to kind of give us a little better idea of what she was talking about, what we're talking about. But I do believe that after watching the DRC meeting and listening to the commissioners ask their questions and listening to Manjula Vaz give her answers and listening to staff, what they were looking at and what they had looked at and listening to the staff recommendation and the DRC approving, did do a little bit of other researching. I do believe that this is a nice project. And I do think that the other option is not doing this apartment complex and just doing an office building that would be there that I think that we would have absolutely no control over. And I do not, I don't think that that's a good thing. I think that because we have this apartment complex in front of us right now, instead of an office building, it has opened the doors to communication between the residents and the developer and the city. And I think that's something that we really want to be able to have. And I think there was a lot of negotiation, negotiating that has gone on that has been really helpful to make this a better project for that area. So I just want to say thank you so much to everybody who has participated in this process. But moving forward, I will be approving this.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Next up, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just, I have a question for Ms. Vaz, and that is, can you talk about the public transportation, i.e. buses in that area and, and how that might help the traffic issues? So I know that's been brought up a lot by my colleagues. So I just, I'd like you to speak to that, please.
Okay, of course, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Adams. You know, there certainly is, and I think either you, as you know, Shelley knows, you know, baseline has, I believe there's a bus stop right in front on baseline. There's one I know on the south side. And, you know, there's a pretty active, I mean, baseline is a, is a big thoroughfare for buses. And certainly, we have a strong multimodal transportation system in Tempe. And we would be, you know, certainly encouraging our residents to use multimodal opportunities to the extent they can. I think we talked a little bit last time about having the developer, you know, certainly talk to the residents about using bus passes and giving them all the other opportunities. We also have a lot of bikes, bike parking, as you saw there. And, you know, this, there, there are some options to, you know, to go and use our various bike pathways to travel to downtown, both downtown Tempe or go south to, you know, to Discovery. And I think this site lends itself to a lot of different multimodal options that originally, you know, when we talked to the planning department and we kind of talked to the neighbors, one of the reasons we actually had less parking is because we thought that there were a lot of multimodal options on this site that our residents would use. And we didn't know that we would need all the parking. But we totally understand the community concerns and so we're happy to add the parking. But, you know, we, Tramco is committed to kind of working with the residents to do multimodal. And I think, you know, the whole city of Tempe is set up to do multimodal. I had a just a conversation the other day with somebody about Orbit. And so, you know, we're excited about the amount of, you know, transportation options around here. And we certainly do our best to encourage people to use them.
And do we have any knowledge, do we have a bus cut out there? I'm not sure.
There's a, there's a, yeah, there's a bus, there's a bus stop on baseline right in front of the property. Sorry, I don't know if it's a cutout, but there's a bus stop.
Okay, so maybe that's one option, just to make sure that we have a cutout there to, to keep the traffic flow moving.
Yeah, I'll talk to Shelley about it.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, of course.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. I'm going to go back to Councilmember Garland.
Thank you, Mayor, I apologize. I did not say that I agree with Councilmember QB and Councilmember Navarro to support option 3A for the entrance not going into and blocking Bala.
Sounds good, thank you, Councilmember Garland. All right, any other council members' comments? All right, I've got some on my end that I just wanted to make. And some of them will mirror some of the previous comments and some are sort of additional. First of all, I did want to say, just as everyone else did, I appreciate the neighbors and their passion and their involvement in this process. You know, I always used to say when I was a council member that, you know, you don't ever worry about the neighborhoods, whatever, where there's a lot of involvement. You worry about the neighborhoods where there's no involvement. And so when people actually get together on something and whether they're fighting to support something or fighting against something, the reality is, I personally just get happy when I see residents who are involved and who obviously care about their neighborhood and care about the future of our community. So I wanted to say thank you to the residents for their involvement. I also wanted to say thank you to Candace as well for inviting me to your home to take a walk. I remember we went out there when it was one of the first days, when it was beginning to get a little hot, but it was still actually pretty comfortable. And she not only invited me into her home, but also walked the entire block with me and showed me the strip center and everything. So I just wanted to say to her, I really, really appreciate your time and appreciate you inviting me into your home and just taking the effort to show me, you know, some of, you know, your neighborhood and obviously what some of the concerns with the proposed project are. There are a couple of things I want to touch upon, too, that have already been said, but I need to go back over them. You know, I do, when I look at this, there was a project, I remember at one point during the eight years that I was on council, that was, you know, that was built because, you know, the group already had, you know, entitled rights and they had the ability to do what they wanted to do. And as a council member, you know, my concern has always been, you know, I trust this council and our staff and everyone involved, whatever, to find ways to, even if a project isn't great or isn't exactly what we want when it comes in, to find ways to frankly make it better through this process. When things go through a staff approval process, when things go through the Development Review Commission, when things go through the city council for approval. You know, we have the ability, as we've seen tonight, to make tweaks and make adjustments and add things and make changes to support and protect our neighborhoods, but also continue to plan for the future of our city. When we talked about the current shopping center that's there, that's mostly vacant, I believe there's probably, I think, two or three active stores that are still there. If, if that site had the ability to really regenerate as a retail shopping destination, I think it would have by now. It's been kind of in that condition for years because unfortunately, it's just no longer viable as a retail shopping center. And I think frankly, the market has just sort of dictated that at this point. And it is, it is what it is. It's not anyone's fault, it's not the residents' fault, it's, it just is what it is. People's shopping habits are different and the way people live is different. And so I don't think that's viable anymore as a commercial center. At the same time, you know, we know that a, you know, a commercial center for retail as well as office, you know, we have really hard data showing that those actually bring a lot more traffic and a lot more congestion than actually than residential. As I think Councilmember QB said, you have with residential, someone leaves first thing in the morning at 7:30, 8 o'clock, and they come home at 5:00 or 6:00 in the evening. And they maybe take one extra trip during the weekend or so to, you know, I don't know, drop their kids off at soccer practice or go to the grocery store to get food. But for the most part, it's a pretty consistent schedule of when people are exiting and coming back. But with, with office space, you've got people and retail coming in at all times a day, you know, back and forth at a very kind of unpredictable schedule, which I think presents more challenges when it comes to traffic. And I've seen, you know, even great developments like in South Tempe with the new, you know, Postinos, which has been wonderful, that and Ghost Ranch at the corner of Rural and Warner. That shopping center is always full. And it becomes really challenging, quite honestly, sometimes to find parking or have the ability to enjoy one of the restaurants because they're all so popular, because they're so good. But that actually has brought a lot more traffic to that area and potentially people parking in the adjacent neighborhoods because of the attraction. parking in the adjacent neighborhoods because of the attraction of those restaurants and all that they bring to the community. And I know the community loves them, but it has brought an increase in traffic. But I think it's been offset by the enjoyment that the residents in that area and throughout Tempe enjoy because of their presence. So, you know, I would much rather in this situation, you know, approve a multifamily residential complex as opposed to an office building that they're already entitled for up to 35 feet, and this council nor the Development Review Commission would have the ability to have any input on whatsoever. That frankly is what frightens me, is when we don't have an opportunity to have a hand in any of this and something just happens to our city or happens to our residents in adjacent neighborhoods. So I, you know, so I think that's why for me, this is a far better option than even the retail center or an office building that could go there because it's already entitled for that kind of height and that kind of use. The last thing that I really want to talk about though is a little bit more personal, and I hope people will indulge me a little, but I'm, you know, going somewhere with this. You know, there were, you know, some comments that I received in email talking about the concern about the fact that this was an apartment complex or the fact that this was going to maybe encourage a more transient population to be there because of renting as opposed to homeownership. And, you know, my concern with that, whatever, is that this is sort of the future for a lot of the development in the city of Tempe. We have the largest public university right here in our backyard with ASU. We have tons of people graduating with bachelor's degrees and master's degrees and doctoral degrees who need places to live as a councilmember or maybe one of the commenters talked about earlier, and they definitely need places to live. I, as the mayor of the city, do not want us to have a brain drain of people who graduate with all of these advanced degrees from a great research university and then move to other parts of the valley or potentially out of state because they can't find housing in our own city. And the reality is, as we know, housing prices are also out of control. My personal story is, I rent in the downtown area. I live right around Fifth, Sixth and Maple in the downtown, and I have now for the last year. I sold my townhome that I had owned for 14 years at the corner of Millan-Baseline because I was just simply ready to move on and do something different. When I went to look for another home, I couldn't find anything in the price range I wanted as a 42-year-old, single male without kids or without any pets. I couldn't find anything. Everything was just out of control, and this was back in June of 2020 when I sold my home. But then this year, fast forward, the housing prices are even higher now and even more out of control and continuing to rise. And so the problem is, if you sell your home and you're looking for another place, it's hard to find anything right now in an affordable price range where you're not going to break the bank. Secondly, I would say too, from my perspective, and I mentioned that I'm 42 years old, I graduated from college at the age of 21, at least from undergrad, and I've had student loans for 21 years. So half my life I've been paying on student loans. And the challenge is, about two out of three people in this country graduate from college with significant and substantial amounts of student loan debt. One of the reasons that I made the decision to rent was not only just because of the rising home prices and an inability to buy something that I thought made sense from a financial standpoint, but it was also because I knew that by renting, I could have fixed costs. I knew that I would pay a certain amount of money every month, and I would have more money to put towards my student loans. And now because I've done that, I will probably pay my student loans off in two full years. So by this time next year, they will be completely gone, and that, you know, weight around me, whatever, is going to be totally gone, and I'll have the ability to live the rest of my life without tons of student loan debt, quite honestly, that I had after graduating from undergrad and graduate school. And I can say, it's been a great experience for me because the reality is, I personally, in my apartment, I've had a dryer break. I had a plumbing issue at one point, and people came, the leasing office came, and they fixed everything, and I didn't have to spend a dime for any of it, which allows me to have costs that are extremely fixed. Now, will I say that I'll never buy a home again? No, absolutely not. I can't wait to buy another home. Probably in the next two or three years, I will absolutely purchase another home in Tempe. But for now, for me personally, renting a place made it a lot easier for me from a financial standpoint and even from a lifestyle standpoint in the fact that I started this job as mayor a year ago today, and I live close to City Hall and can walk to City Hall in three or four minutes and focus my time and energy not on taking care of my place, not on a broken air conditioning unit or a plumbing problem or a broken washer or dryer, but I can focus my energy on doing the job on behalf of the residents of this city as the mayor and working with our city council to continue to take our city into the future. And so for me personally, the renting was not because I didn't have good credit or not because I had anything else in my background that was challenging, it was because for me and for a lot of people like me and for an increasing number of people, it is a sound financial decision and it's the right thing from a lifestyle standpoint. And so, you know, I understand, you know, the concern about, you know, the changing community and some of the increased density people are seeing and the new apartments and things of that nature, but I do think that this is the wave of the future, and this is where most cities are going. And I do think that it provides necessary housing for college graduates, for senior citizens, and for folks like me who are just, you know, trying to do a job, but trying to have more fixed costs and trying to be even more fiscally responsible on my end. So I just wanted to say, you know, it's a long talk, but I felt like the only way to really talk about this so people understood where I'm coming from is to really tell it like, not just a story, but a personal story of why I made the decision that I made and why I think it's the right decision for myself and obviously so many others. And with that said, I will go ahead and close out my comments. Council, are there any more comments on your end? Hearing none, we've got two votes on this. Let me ask a quick question to the city attorney, Judy Baumann. There's been a lot of preference to talk about, including Alternative 3A, which is the median that would not block access to Bala. Is there some way that we could include that preference in a motion? And if so, would you want it on the first vote or on the second vote?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I think that we would recommend that the council include that item on the second vote. The first vote this evening would be on the general plan, and I think that it might make the most sense to move to approve the planned area development, which is the second vote, with the condition specific to Option 3A is read into the record by the applicant's attorney, Manjul Vaz.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Attorney, appreciate it. So the first vote will not contain anything about the Alternative 3A, but the second vote is where a councilmember can choose to add that to a formal motion. So with that said, I will look for a motion on, and actually I should say, the first vote just for the public is on the General Plan Projected Land Use Map Amendment and the General Plan Projected Density Map Amendment. I'm going to look for a motion on the resolution authorizing a General Plan Projected Land Use Map Amendment and a General Plan Projected Density Map Amendment, and then I'll look for a second afterwards. Is there a first? Moved by Councilmember Garland, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember QB. I will take a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage? Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That item passes six to zero with Councilmember Arredondo Savage absent. The second vote is on the zoning map amendment, planned area development overlay, and the development plan review. I'm going to look for a motion on the ordinance for a zoning map amendment in addition to the planned area development overlay and the development plan review, and maybe council might add a motion about Alternative 3A. Councilmember QB?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to add a motion regarding council's strong preference for Alternative 3A, which will allow access and egress to Bala, to Bala Drive. My statement.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so it's been moved by Councilmember QB and seconded by Councilmember Adams to approve this second vote, but also to add a strong preference for Alternative 3A, which would be the median that would not block access to Bala Drive. I'm going to go ahead, yes.
Should we also say that we ask that we, that our city will work with the developer? Because I know that ADOT is going to want to hear from the city, or is that an obvious thing? Do we need to add?
Let me ask our city attorney, Ms. Baumann, what do you think?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We could certainly include that in the motion that was presented by the council that the city commits to work also with the developer and with ADOT.
Okay, and so Madam City Attorney, are the motion of the second on the floor okay for that, or do we need to restate them at all?
So long as there's no confusion and the applicant's attorney believes that she has what she needs to work with and our city clerk has enough for the record, I think we're fine.
Okay. I think we're good. Ms. Vaz, are you, are you good with the direction here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as I understand the direction, and I think we all understand it is that it is council's strong preference to go 3A and that's what we're going to work with ADOT. And I'm just looking for ADOT to understand what the city's preferences, so we can help. And if we have any concerns, we'll come back and talk to the staff and the council, and we can work through how the options are going to go. So yes, that'd be great. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. All right, so I've got a motion by Councilmember QB and a second by Councilmember Adams. I will call for a roll call. Councilmember Navarro? Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage? Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That item passes six to zero with Councilmember Arredondo Savage absent. Next up, item number seven, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I'm going to go ahead and call on councilmembers for their comments. Councilmember Adams, would you lead us off?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay? Okay, good. Yes, you can, okay. I am happy to announce that I have my next community outreach event next Thursday. It's Join Jennifer, and we're going to be in the 852-83 zip code, and it will be on Thursday, July 8th at 6:00 PM. It'll be virtually on Cisco WebEx. And I do have special guests that are going to be joining me on the call, and that's Alexandra Albert and Jody Romney from WSB, and they're going to present on the I-10 Broadway Curve Improvement. So that's going to be a really valuable discussion, and I want to know, I want everyone to know that although it is 852-83, everyone is welcome at the city to attend the virtual event. And I'm hoping actually that this will be my last virtual event, and I can start meeting everyone out in person in August. So if you want more information on it, about it, you can go to tempe.gov/Adams, and you can follow me on my Join Jennifer meetings. And my second announcement is Happy Fourth of July to everyone. I would like to wish everyone a Happy Fourth of July. I want everyone to stay safe and healthy, be careful with the fireworks, and also I want to say hello to my parents, Gordon and Glory Adams, that are watching this evening. So thanks and have a great Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Next up, Councilmember Garland.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I have a slide. Yes, there it is. So businesses, the city of Tempe is working with the Tempe Chamber, Downtown Tempe Authority and Tempe Tourism Office to have two citywide job fairs. They're Wednesday, July 21st and Wednesday, July 28th. So if you are looking for employees, you can register your business at tempe.gov/jobmonsoon. City staff will hand you some green balloons to put outside your business, and they'll also give you a poster. We would like you to register with the city by July 12th. And if you are a job seeker, look for the balloons flying outside those businesses on July 21st and 28th. They will have applications, and some will be ready to interview and possibly hire you on the spot. So when the jobs are filled, the balloons will come down, and we are hoping that we see lots of balloons in the morning and very few balloons by the end of the day. So if you would like to list your business to participate, make sure, or if you'd like to get a list of the businesses who are participating, go to tempe.gov/jobmonsoon, and good luck to all. And Mayor, I have one more that does not have a slide. I would just like to say that tomorrow will be one year since you and I, Mayor, you and I were sworn in, and I just want to say a really big thank you to my council aide Kristen Gwynn and two other council aides who have really helped me out this year, Tim Gomez and Alex Chen, and from the city manager all the way to 311 operator who's helped me out several times. I just want to say thank you to everybody for helping me through this first year of mine, and I also want to say thank you to Mayor and my colleagues who have mentored me through this year. You know who you are, you've really helped me out, and I just want to say thank you, and I'm looking forward to the next three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Next up, Vice Mayor Keating?
Nothing from me, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next up, Councilmember QB.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, your first anniversary of your ascension to power. Just want to congratulate Councilmember Garland and you. And, Mr. Mayor, you've done such a tremendous job and the challenges that you've faced, COVID, the railway accident, the tsunami of human services and social service needs, and then to think about the response and how you have really put pedal to the metal and expanded our affordable housing initiatives in so many different ways, and you've really empowered staff to be creative and think, I don't want to use the cliche, you know, outside the envelope, but really you've empowered staff to come up with the solutions and not be hampered by previous, you know, restrictions like, we don't have the money. You said, let's find a way. So I want to thank you for your leadership and Doreen, your heart and soul for human services and your ability to just explore and chew and chew on and investigate every single issue that comes before us. Your research capacity is just so tremendous, and I'm really inspired by you, so thank you both. I don't have a slide for the next topic, but I do just want to say that the Fourth of July is coming up, and for many veterans, for many pet owners, this is a time of stress. And we know from, I believe now till July 6th, there are more opportunities to use fireworks, shall we say, and we know that the use of fireworks is permitted by both state and local laws. We have Michael Morrison, who I'm on the opposite political spectrum from, but he has been someone that's been working toward some legislation and didn't succeed this year. We have high hopes for next year that we'll be able to return some measure of local authority to our fireworks legislation. But I am so proud to say that our police chief, Jeff Glover, is really taking this issue seriously and, you know, whether legal or illegal, and we know that there are lots of illegal fireworks used in Tempe around the Fourth of July, skyrockets, bottle rockets, reloadable shell devices, roman candles, aerials, single tube devices with reports, those are all illegal. And I know the police chief has a plan to do more target enforcement and enforcement, and I'm so glad because I know that household pets, in addition to veterans, are so fearful of loud noises. That's the day that, of the year that where dogs get lost tend to get lost more than any other time of year. So I want to thank our police chief and thank our communication staff for getting on this issue, and hopefully we can prevent a little bit of misery on this Fourth of July and celebrate in style. So thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember QB. Next up, Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing, Alex Smith, I'm going to miss you, love you, thank you for all the time and service you did for the city of Tempe. You've been awesome for us. That is it, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Navarro. And I don't have any announcements on my end, so I'm going to go next up to public appearances. Madam Clerk, were there any comments for public appearances received by the city of Tempe Speaker Comment Card System?
No, Mayor, nothing received for this section.
All right, hearing none, then we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 7:52 PM. Thank you so much, everyone. Once again, we will return to the council chambers on August 5th, but we're going to be on break for the next five weeks, but have a wonderful summer with your family and friends, and we look forward to seeing you then. Take care and happy July 4th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.